I'm here. Secretary of the L L P O A. My name is Henry Longley, my entire life. And thankfully, my husband and husband and I were able to purchase our own place about two and a half years ago. The property that we purchased, we would not have purchased had it not been the work that RLS did in fixing our lake. And they fixed it using science. They didn't, they didn't just go chemicals. They were targeted in their approach. They only addressed the invasive plants. And they didn't wipe out the natural habitat in the lake that's necessary to support fishing. So with that, I looked at the 2018. I looked at the 2018 resolution and it specifically says that this has to be dealt with tonight. Wording says, subject to annual review and approval by the regular lease schedule in September. I am just asking why don't we begin the next week for a special meeting? And why can't address that when all of these folks and some of us came from downstate to a time of need? Thank you.
Michael Lee.
Yep. Good evening, I'm Michael Lessig, President of the Long Lake Property Owners Association since June. As you're all aware, the lake is a special assessment district set up by aquatic reef control and lake manager. This program has been a resounding success. Let me repeat that our lakes have been brought back to life and is a jewel of this town. We wish to keep it there. As a property owner for the last nine years and a resident or some resident of this lake since 1962. I love this place and I want to keep it the way it is. I am leading the charge on getting this on the agenda and giving these people here tonight. I took an informal poll of our lake association members. Over ninety-six percent responded, over a hundred and forty people responded. And they are very happy with the lake as it is and we wish it to continue, including the services of our lake manager. Didn't work here. The current assessment is insufficient to fund both the lake manager and our reef control chemical applications. And the only option presented to us is to eliminate the lake management portion, which is a completely faulty restored of the sciences. A professional lake management consultant. Since 2015, the actual cost of our treatment of the lake manager exceeded thirty thousand dollars per year. On average, closer to thirty-five thousand. The assessment is only collected between twenty-five and thirty thousand since 2018. And the fund balance in the special assessment district has made up the difference. That fund balance has been exhausted and we are now without sufficient funds to properly use any service we enjoy. As currently allowed, the special assessment district can increase five percent per year without a vote by the board for the resolution passed in 2018. Resolution also appears to allow fund increase of up to ten percent by the board addressing its vote. Yeah, and ten percent appears to require the notice in public hearing under public. My fellow property owners and I are requesting that the township address this in whatever manner possible. To ensure that we can continue to enjoy the services we willingly and overwhelmingly improve it. Every owner of property on Long Lake has immense pride in both our property and the lake. We are committed to never again returning to an unmanageable choke with invasive plants. We seek a well-balanced lake that encourages native plants and vegetation, eliminates invasive and provides enjoyment for all to visit. You'll hear from some of my neighbors in Long Lake who are bad. And I presume they share similar sentiments. While some of us, some of what we hear may be repetitive, please note that we are passionate. Thank you for your time and I can assure you that the L L P O A board and plenty myself are committed to working with you to arrive at a solution. That meets the needs of our lake, is fiscally responsible and provides a framework for the future. Thank you.
And Chris.
Thank you. It's tough to follow up an elegant speaker. Chris Lyon, property owner in forty-eight oh seven Lakeside. We've been here. More than twenty years. It's nice to put some names and faces together. We're heavily invested in the lake. We have taken a three-season cottage and built a four-season cottage. We intend to stay, we have family here in other cottages, a lot of friends, a lot of friends. But this group has come forward and is asking for is to continue with our science-based management of the lake. We're asking you to raise our taxes and we're willing to, we're willing to do that. So we asked that you work with us. I look forward to the special meeting next week. Special assessment document. Do you need to move quickly, which is not something we're used to doing when we're on the lake or in the government offices and so forth like that? We need to plan and move forward effectively and quickly, unfortunately. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I wouldn't say Pat, but Pat has pulled away. And I want to thank all of them for showing up here tonight and we don't, we don't respond to public comments during our record board meeting because it's just exactly that, the public comment. It's time for you to talk to us and tell us what your feelings are. And because like I talked to, we've talked to Michael and Chris on this extensively over the last few weeks. This requires much more than ten-minute discussion that was required. The board has sit and talked with you and your board. And that's exactly why we wanted to set up a meeting just for this purpose. Because we have, we have, this is our regular meeting and we've got a big agenda tonight that we do our normal business at. And that's what this meeting is normally for, is our regular business meeting. We've got to start stuff and that covered tonight, which is exactly what we have to do this evening. And so one of the things tonight is to establish and set up a meeting with you guys. To go over just this specific issue and have a, have a night to just talk about this specific issue. And decide where we're going forward, moving forward with this. And that's one of the items on our agenda this, this evening is to do just that. So I thank you for coming in and telling us, you know, what your feelings are and what you want, what you're looking at, what you want to do, all of them, both. And we'll do just that this evening. I believe that we have that up and kind of jumping forward in the agenda here, I think we set that up for next Wednesday evening at six o'clock. Right here. Yes, I believe that was open on everybody's calendar. Yeah. So next Wednesday, six o'clock in this meeting room right here to do just that. And you'll have the entire board here, Rob will be here at that time too. So our entire board will be here to do just nothing but deal with the specific issue and go through this. And come to a resolution when we're done on this. Okay? So that will be the whole plan then. And I'm not going to get into a question and answer, that's not, that's not the purpose. Not the purpose, if we start opening questions and answers, questions up to the audience, it'll never, it'll never, it'll never get over, it will never get over. It will never get over, it will never get over. The moment I break that, the moment I break that open, the moment I break that open, it doesn't stop, it just doesn't stop. And I understand your frustration, I get that and I really apologize for that. I'm not trying to, I'm just saying the moment I start with one, then the other one wants, and the other one wants. So we just can't start that issue up. Okay, and I'm not trying to, not trying to put anything down, I'm just saying you can't, you can't break that, 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 that opening. Because it's just not the way you can conduct a meeting, it doesn't work, it breaks that thing open. And Michael, you've already had a chance at this meeting here, but this is in regards to the meeting itself.
About next, pardon, about next Wednesday, I will, I will be having a Zoom so that people can watch it.
And that's fine, oh, that's fine.
That was her question.
Yeah. Yeah. If it's a Zoom issue, if it's a Zoom issue, you can have a Zoom, yeah, that's it. I have no problem with a Zoom, I have no problem with a Zoom conference. Folks, I mean, I have no issue with making these as public as you want to make them. I, I've never been close to that stuff. And I, I told people before, my office is a public office. I want to come in and go through my office, come in and go through my office, there's nothing that's secret squirrel about. I've got nothing to hide, I've got nothing to see about. You guys, you guys paid for everything in there, it's exactly what it is, nothing, nothing, nothing that's, nothing that's secret about it. I don't do anything like that, it's a public office, okay?
Just don't mess with our key. Just don't mess with our key.
You think I, I
You don't have to.
My key, I don't have any. The only thing, the only thing in these, all these offices that's, that's got secret squirrel stuff is that I think in her office, she's got some personnel files on there. Other than that, they've got to do that for, for Ripa and whatnot, but other than that, everything else is pretty much public stuff. So you don't told me anything to see for stuff here, it's just not that way, you don't, you don't do those things. Kind of like, somebody had called and asked about, and I mean, if someone asked for a whole bunch of data, we may make them go through the stuff with, what's that stuff, what's it called? Boya. But other than that, you guys call and ask for information, we pop it out, we'll give you the information. It's you guys' data. We give you the data, we give you the stuff, we give you the documents, they're, we'll give it to you. What it is, man. We are public service, I mean, I, I told people before, I have more bosses now than I've ever had in my life. As far as, because it's every single person that's out there. Doesn't mean I have to listen to every person, but I do have to listen to the collective when we do things. So that's what we try and do and we understand. So that being said, I would hope to see you guys next Wednesday. I would like to see you next Wednesday and get into this discussion and make sure that we have open dialogue. Well, move forward and getting past this and getting through this. And, one more of this. Overhead. All right. Thank you, appreciate it. So that being said, I have no other request for public comment. So we'll move on. We have a, next up, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the August, August eighteenth regular and special meeting. And the September first question meeting.
I'll make that most recent of the minutes.
With motion support, questions, comments, or corrections within? All clear to say aye? And is there a thoughtful financial report?
General fund balance, nine hundred one thousand twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. No major changes, so no problem.
Budget report, we've got a budget amendment that's coming up that we've got to deal with later on the agenda. It's going to be for the tearbacks on the third purpose, but other than that, we're early on in the budget. Everything is pretty much as we expected at this point in time. You are the check from Parks and Rec for the reimbursement for the proposal to sell it yesterday, because of road. Children, we sent it yesterday to Parks and Rec. I found that out today, so that should be coming to us over the next couple of days. Park, Park, yeah, they did, they did cut that. I talked to, talked to Parks and Rec today. We've got a possibility of getting somebody on their Parks and Rec board, they've got a half a million dollars setting. Jamie met with them funding. Yeah. They've got a half a million dollars setting in their budget. Because they have not yet spent, they've collected from taxes from the town. That I would like to find a way to tap into because, I mean, we've, we, our township has given so much to that budget. And we've, yes, I mean, we've been able to get five thousand dollars out of it. Like I said, that's all we've been able to get out of that budget. You know, we've given seventy-five thousand dollars into that fund so far and that's the best we've been able to get back out of it. And I don't know, I'm, I'm frustrated, extremely frustrated and it's
It's like they already did change in the right direction. Sounds like they're really just changing the right direction.
Well, I, I did get that they had their secretary step inside and so they did say that they contacted Cheryl. Well, getting on, but she's stepping aside, that doesn't mean she's stepping off. So hopefully though, if they don't have anybody else to step on and take on the secretary position, maybe she will just step off. If they don't have anybody else to do it, Cheryl will take the secretary position out if they offer it. So that will at least then get somebody to complain to the township onto the Parks and Rec board. I mean, we, because right now we have no representation in that county Parks and Rec.
So not that we haven't tried.
Or, you know, between County Parks and Rec and nine-one-one, I mean, you don't have anybody on the nine-one-one board because we can't get anybody on that one. We don't have anybody on County Parks and Rec because, you know, I mean, it goes out of Talos, east Talos in Oskoosa. So it's, 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 it's again, just frustrating, it's very frustrating to get representation of that. So it's one of those things we try and do. It would also, I mean, we ended up with, we ended up with two ambulances in the entire county this weekend. Which is why our M F R is so, is so visible. You know, when they, because they're waiting fifteen and twenty minutes, they get an ambulance response on a call and those are just our M F R. I mean, you know, God bless them, we got our M F R. Because if we didn't have them, our people would be, our, our community would be waiting because we just can't seem to get the response. But, you know, again, you scream the yellow holler that nine, at nine-one-one and you just, I again, another frustrating, another frustrating issue.
What is that, what did you hear? The ambulance service was at all?
The ambulance service, the, the ambulance service, the budgetary, we, we pay, we, we pay the county.
The mill.
You look at your, it's a millage, if you look at your, if you look at your millage, if you look at the millage you pay in your December bill, your December tax bill. You'll see a, you'll see an ambulance number John. You'll see a nine-one-one, then you'll see an ambulance number John, they're both. The, the, the problem that you've got is that the, the ambulance millage that you pay is about one-fifth of the cost of running the ambulance service in the county. Ambulance service in the county costs about three million dollars to run. What they collect because the millage is so low is about six hundred thousand dollars, county one. They end up spending, the rest of the money that they use to, to supplement that fund is for transfers. The money that they get out of transfers. So when you find four ambulances in the county, a number of them are on transfers on the first times, transfer invasions and whatnot, rather than responding to calls, they're not available. The other problem we're running into is that our ambulance service our rates are not high enough to entice, and there's a shortage of qualified E M Gs in the state right now, across the country actually. And our rates are not high enough to entice people to come into our county and work. So Opona and surrounding counties, Oskoosa, Aranac, pay higher rates, so we can't get the people. So we are understaffed. And we can't fill our ambulance well. And as such, we can't man them. So we're finding ourselves not being able to have enough staff on board to be able to put four rigs out there every day in the different, the different four areas that we have. So this is, this is where we find ourselves in the university. And again, it's, it's, I, I commend people of our community for supporting the M F R millage that we have, it's not a lot, but it's enough to support our program here. I commend our M F R person, that's where Pat just went, he just went on a call. Our M F R guys and gals that are manning our rigs because they are very, very physical. They're averaging probably ten calls a week, fifteen calls a week here in the whole community. If it wasn't for them, they, we would not have the services we get right now. They're, they're very good, but it's, it's what we're doing.
How do you answer it?
Pardon?
How do you answer it?
Well, it's, it's, it's about money, to be honest with you, it's about money. You either, and this is one of the things that we talked to the county commissioners about, you know, you give your, you give your community a choice. Do you want to pay more in a, in a millage and fund your ambulance service? So that you can fund it and take, take these guys off of transfers and pay more to have your people be available. Um, or not, I mean, that's kind of the question you're really, you're really asking yourself, is what are you willing to bump? And that's, that's, it's, it's, it's the bottom line, it's all about, it's always the bottom line, you know that as well as I, that's the question you want to ask.
Yeah, I don't want to press long.
It's a whole different discussion to ask, to be honest with you, but it is
How does, how does that language compare to other communities that might have the service?
It's low. It's low. It's low. But anyways, again, another whole discussion, another little time, but it's, it's, it's something that at some point in time, if we, if we want to be able to cover what we got here, we've got to have. It's, it's and that, and that is what's happening and that, that's something that we've, that's something that we've got to understand is that our, the face of our community is changing. And when we were, when we were up here on weekends in cabins and cottages, it's a different story because we were only up here for a number of weekends in the summertime. And so our, our, our touching up here was, was minor. It was, we weren't up here a lot, so we didn't have a lot of need. As we retire up here, we spend more time up here on a consistent basis. And our, while we're up here, our age gets up there, so our needs go greater. Our, our requirements are more. And so, yeah, that's going to change and it is changing, we're finding it. But yet, as that happens, then we've got to make sure the face of what we're receiving up here changes too. And that's something that's we've got, we've got to get talking the powers to be to make that happen and it's, it's a discussion, it's not the amount. So those are discussions that need to be. Other things that need to be talked about, so to speak. Anyways, um all right, presentation of bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Motion support, any questions about the bills? Go, 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 please.
Alan, yeah, Bethany, yes, Woodup, he's absent, Louis.
Yes.
And Ray, yes.
All right, establish meeting time and date for the L L P O A resolution discussion. I think we did that and set that up for next Wednesday at six o'clock here, correct?
Already called.
Okay. You guys are good with that?
Yeah, can I just stand there for a second? Yes, me, the spokesperson. So I just want to say, can I, I'm going to have this in, but your rules don't allow for remote participation.
Pardon?
Would, if somebody on the Zoom meeting wanted to speak, would you allow that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. No, no, for, for a board, for a board meeting, it's, I mean, for for our monthly board meeting like that, this is, that's a different thing. For this discussion, this is specifically to have interaction between us.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, that's an open meeting for us to have all the discussion we need.
Perfect, thank you.
So no, that's, that's open discussion, that's open for everybody.
I will facilitate, thank you.
Okay, no, that's cool. And you're going, you're going to take care of that? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right. ARPA funds update. All right. There, we're getting closer on when those funds are going to become available. And what they're going to do is they're going to end up sending me an email that they're, they've got approved. And then the next thing you know, they're going to just don't commit the account, is what they're going to end up doing. Our amount that we're looking at is about a hundred and ninety thousand this year and a hundred and ninety thousand next year. What I'm looking at right off the bat is, I'm looking at the sewer panel and pumps. I'd like to get those updated because we have such a problem in the downtown area with the sewer panel, especially with, with the COVID and the, the whites, the whites have just been, I mean, they've been just devastating with us with the sewer pumps. They've been plugging the pumps up for something fierce and they've been causing us none of the problems, even pulling pumps. We found out the pumps down across from the assisted living complex actually had probably, probably flooded for probably three weeks. Yeah. Yeah, our fault was causing the problem, I don't know why we didn't message on it, but we didn't get a fail safe on it and it had been, it was just, anyways. So we need to get, we need to get the, we need the panels upgraded, I need to get the pumps taken care of. I don't know if I'm going to end up with a grinder in there. I don't know if, I don't know what I'm going to get some, but I'm going to end up getting, I want to get Kennedy on this winter and I want to get them to, to redo those panels, both the South M sixty-five and North M sixty-five on the Hudson Road. I want to get the panels upgraded and get off the old capacitor start, there's old capacitor start motors in there. I want to get in, into the variable to drive start systems, which anyways, I just want to get them into an upgrade system like I can. There's a whole different thing in that, but, and get the, get the motors upgraded and get the panels upgraded because these are circa, with the exception of the one panel, the other panels, the other three panels are all circa late eighties or nineties. Vending shoot systems. And that's, these are all, it can be used, the ARPA money can be used for. The other thing I'd like to do is, we're still running into issues with the well at the fire hall. It still has a sand issue and the worst thing you can do is put sand through those pumps for the fire, the, the fire equipment.
Yeah.
It'll wreck those pumps. So we'd like to look at putting another well in out there on the outside so that it's accessible also by other fire departments. If they need to use it to fill their rigs if they're fighting the fire locally. So we'd like to look at putting a large well outside on the south side of the pad. That's another thing that's, that's, that's acceptable under ARPA. So those are the two big things I'd like to look at, a plan for the winter and working on for the spring.
Then we can hook in now, splash pad.
And you could, we could look at putting the splash pad, hook up to that for the, for the children's park right next door, if you'd ask, you could get your splash pads.
Thanks.
I know that that's one of the things you're, you're looking for, the splash pad for kids' parks, I know. Yes. Look at putting a splash pad in for the kids. So, so if that's okay and if that's acceptable to the board, I'll move ahead and try to get those plans put together for the winter and but I, I want to, I want to pass that by you before I move down that road and start working on those plans. And then find out if that's not the way we want to go. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Pardon? Okay, I understand, but I just, I'm, I'm, we're getting to the point now that we're actually, we start putting some, getting somebody under contract, start getting bids on it, start getting stuff together on it. I just don't want to put the time and effort into it to find out if that's not what the board is looking to have us back, okay? Entrance covers, so we've talked about, we, we got a, we got a design on a very fancy entrance cover over here. And it would be great, the, the preliminary bid we got was not cheap, it was pretty expensive. So we got talking the other day about this and we were looking at maybe just putting some, some covers over there to do it, do something a little bit cheaper on that. And I got looking at that. And I was looking at that in addition to, we went down to aluminum melt sales, so the town, when we were doing some repairs on the old hall. And the prices on the metals are really good.
Where's that? Where's that?
The Amish.
Okay.
Okay, diamonds and gold. And so I was online and one of the things when we start looking at these, the metal sheds, okay, is the design is not usually good for this area for our loads. But there is a, there's a company called Versitude that actually will give us the design for our area. there is a, there's a company called Versity who that actually will give us the design for our area. It'll give us the forty pound snow load that we need up here, the forty pound snow load. And um, connect around the bank out for a wind. And the uh twenty eight pound live load for snow. So, um, gives us square tube design on it.
How much wind?
Pardon?
How much wind?
Ninety. Ninety. Um, looking at one, on that entrance there, twelve foot wide, twenty eight foot long, twelve foot sidewalls on it, just a frame, um, would, we could get for five grand. And I'm saying that because I'd like to then get the steel from the Amish.
Do you want to just put, use it off your front?
Okay.
Stop all that mess coming up there.
Yeah. And we could put the cover over it as we need it, because we don't need it on the side. We can put it right up against the building side and get it on the roof and then come up halfway on the side there and protect what we need on it. Put right on that slab, monter it in the concrete, mark it up against the sidewall.
Don't cover it by ground blocks.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't walk the concrete. Twelve foot, Texas doesn't use all the concrete. What do you think?
I see.
Hmm.
We needed it for years, we just got one of those, so that first we have.
Well, this thing says it can, I don't think, if you're, if you're on it, I don't, to steal the way it is, I can't imagine they can get it here this quick, because I'm going to get it in a matter of, matter of weeks.
That could be fifty-two weeks.
Hmm.
Weeks meaning a couple of weeks, three weeks or fifty-two weeks?
No, no, it's only matters.
I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm saying it's a price.
Thanks, let's get on.
So you want me to get this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to go ahead and get the frame and the steel for. I'll, I'll support.
That's just the frame?
The frame, we don't have a price for the steel yet.
Well, the steel and that's maybe based on what we got, we got another thousand dollars collected at that point.
Yeah, that's something.
Okay, you got a motion with support? Your support?
I support.
All right, any questions? Go, go, go.
Bessie, yes. Louis.
Yes.
Riley, yes, and Alan, yes.
All right, fiscal year change, um, one of the issues that we've been having is, and it's been especially true comes with weeds, is because our, our budget years go from July first to June thirty. Which stinks, especially when it goes to weeds, because you're right in the middle of weed treatment. I mean, you're right.
And roads too.
Roads, roads are that way, the same way, everything is just, it just, it stinks. We really need to change our fiscal year to May, August through April first to March thirty, which will get us out of all these problems and we, we uh, we have to go into a short year this year, um, and we start a new budget starting in April. Um, we shorten ours down this year and uh stop our budget um in um, in, in March, end of March. Start a new budget in April and run through, um, I think we need to do it. We can take it and make a resolution in, 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 in October and make a change and get this thing fixed so that we're not.
I think.
We have such a mess of general entries on July first issues that.
It's all due to weeds, due to.
It would make, it would make everything so much easier, so much easier to track out and to take our budgets out of this, this, this myriad of, what's when and where and what got, what got booked when, what got booked where and so on and so forth. So I'll work on that and we'll see what we've got to do with the auditor, make sure, make sure that we get our good word away on that. Um, private road maintenance agreement.
We don't have one.
We don't have one. We have nobody to do the private roads. Sand Lake is looking at it and said he'll check into it in his inbox. Wilson will not do it. They have, they used to, they, they said they will not bid this time. Coterman um looked at it and said that they're not interested right now. They can't definitely do the, the snow plumbing. And they said that the grading, which they might be interested in, um, just pencil the paper, their grading, they said would be in excess of seventy thousand for one year. The Wilson bid for the snow plumbing and grading for the entire year was forty-two.
It's forty-two.
Forty-two.
Would we have to put that up? I mean, can we put it in the paper asking for bid? How does that, some word that works?
We have to ask somebody by the end of the month because I don't have.
They can put it in the paper asking for bid.
Okay.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, you can put it up.
I don't know, if anybody wants it.
Well, that's not the point. The point is, who has the, who has the infrastructure to handle that?
Nobody.
The only other person that had the infrastructure to handle that around here would be John Henry. Or in Tallahassee. How's he going to get over here and do the snow plumbing?
Now he does all the snow plumbing Dallas.
That's my point. My point is, is that you're looking at somebody who's got that kind of infrastructure, but can handle something. I mean, this isn't something you can call somebody from Bay City and say, come on up here, handle the roads. I mean, this is.
Is it non-Michigan roads around here?
Pardon?
What, what roads?
Private roads.
Twenty-three private, twenty-three private roads. They're, they're, you're talking, oh, you're talking O'Connor, you're talking a couple over by Long Lake, which are the little roads off of Lakeside, which are, which are uh,
Part of Avalon.
Huh?
Part of Avalon.
Part of, well, Avalon is, Avalon is one over by Little Long Lake. You're talking um, a couple of the tree streets back there off of Lakeside, um.
Franklin.
Pardon?
Franklin. Or Franklin.
Franklin.
Franklin. No. You're talking, you're talking Martha, talking back on there. Um, there, I got twenty-three of them.
Yeah, we have to.
I got twenty-three of them across the townships. But they're private roads. We, we, it, it's not that we're re, the township isn't required to take care of these. These are private roads, have been private roads for years. Uh, the county used to do them just because the people asked them to take care of them, if they would, and they, they're specially assessed to deal with that. Um, the county quit doing them years ago because of the problems associated with it. Um, the people came to us and said, could you see if somebody would take care of these? We did and Wilson, we did it with Wilson and Cotman, also got the contract. Wilson's been doing it for a number of years, but issues arose, um, a number of problems came up. Um, and Wilson just said that they're done. They're not doing it anymore. And so, and Cotman looked at it and said they, they can't, they, they're, they're not ready to take on the snow plumbing. They don't have enough snow plows to handle it. And uh, the grading portion of it, they, if they did it, it would be almost twice what Wilson charges for the entire job. Um, I've got another company right now that's looking at it. Um, they don't know if they're going to do it because they've never done it before, so I'm waiting to hear back from them. So that's a possibility, but if they don't, then these roads will be on their own to find somebody to take care of and started with the snow plumbing as well. And it is not, I mean, we, we're not, it's not our, it's a private road, I can't, we don't have, it's not ours to take care of. It's not our responsibility, but.
You can't use public funds for private roads. You can't use public funds.
No, no, it's not. And it's not our responsibility as a township to do that. It's just, it's kind of like you guys, like your weed control. It's not really our responsibility to take care of the weeds in your light. You guys came to us and said, you guys handle this, take care of it, but we're doing it, so. Collecting money in the S A D and handling weeds on it. There's a, these are special assessments. So, but it's special assessment, these are road special assessment district and private road. So I, I, I'm just telling you that this is potentially coming and I, I, I'm in a lot. I, anybody has any ideas? Show my way.
This is a much larger problem than we think it, than we think on the surface because there are a lot of mortgage companies calling me and they, they have to prove they have a road agreement or maintenance agreement to get a mortgage. So people that live on those roads are not going to be able to sell their homes or get mortgages or refinanced. Some of them, some mortgage companies aren't like that, but numerous ones call and we have to have proof of that contract.
Danny Mayor Freddie Matt, you're.
No.
You will not be, you will, they will not be eligible for Danny Mayor Freddie Matt mortgage about.
Without a private road agreement.
Pardon?
Without a private road agreement.
With a private road agreement, they will not be eligible for Danny Mayor Freddie Matt.
And I answered.
Mortgage companies that mortgage organization are, those, those are the ones to call.
So if anybody knows who Freddie wants to do some snow plowing, it's Freddie.
Somebody wants to get into road grading job or snow plumbing, but you're, you're gonna, you're gonna beat the dickens out of your stuff because some of these roads are nasty. They're back in the back of the middle of where, eighty trail. Eighty trail. How bad, how bad for them? Huh? It is a lot better than these. Wilson's brought that up into a decent road at this point, but still. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed that that is potentially coming within the next week because I'm guessing that, I'm guessing that I'll get, I'll hear back from this contractor tomorrow or Friday. And if uh, he doesn't bite on this, then by Monday, you're going to probably, I'm going to probably have to send a word out to people. We're going to send a letter, we'll, we'll send a letter out to everybody on the road, what's going on. And uh, what's happening because they're going to have to start, they're going to start hustling. I mean, if they don't, if we don't have a contract, they're going to start us. Find somebody to start, especially when it comes to snow plowing. You know, and I, 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 I don't know what to tell them. I just don't know what to tell them. This is not, we, we. These are just some of the other issues we're going. But anyways, um, all right. We need to renew the contract with the Jitsumoff consultant for the twenty for the upcoming year. It is priced one up by a hundred bucks, which is very lucky because he actually is increasing the price by thousands there, but he'll, that's, he's really in demand right now.
I'll make the motion to renew the contract with Jitsumoff consultant. I don't know his name.
Pardon?
What's his name?
Neil. Neil Swanson.
Yeah, I'll support.
The morning support contract. Renewal, renew Swanson, Jitsumoff consultant. Any other questions? Go, 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 please.
Louis?
Yes.
Riley, yes. Alan, yes. Alan, yes.
Um, next up, uh, budget amendment to the airbags. This is the uh, we bought these airbags last year. I thought they were going to invoice us last year because we had the money in the budget last year to do these, um, but they didn't. Because, I don't know, maybe it's another supply issue, supply chain issue. They just came in and so the budget, or so the bill just came in, so we needed to move the money from last year's budget into this year's budget to cover these. So we need to approve this budget amendment to move twenty-nine thousand from last year's budget into this year's budget to cover this.
I'll support. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we already approved first.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the motion support?
Yes.
Any questions? Go, 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 please.
Riley, yes. Alan, yes. Bessie, yes. Louis.
Yes.
I bet you that that's a shortage because we're having issues that I'm sure accident.
Yeah, sure.
We're shorting them.
Um.
Can I take the next one?
Yes, yes, you can. Yes.
We have at least the Special Olympics since the opening of the building actually, and they have a little room in the locker room that they have storage in. And they have not been able to come back because of COVID. The state will not release them to come back, so they have not used it for almost a year, well, almost two years now. Um, they have kept their storage here. Last year, four H petitioned the board to cut their lease in half because they couldn't eat either, but they used the storage. So I would like to propose, they have petitioned us for a reduction or something because they can't use the building. I would like to propose that they get this next year free because they've been paying full price all along, even though they couldn't eat. So to get one year free.
And hopefully they'd like the same thing we do.
Basically, it'll end up the same thing.
Four H's, yeah. We did no four H, yeah. I'll make that motion to uh take into consideration the request and ask for no charge.
No charge for the next semester. It starts October, October first.
Um.
October first, that's over.
This year, so. Did you have something, right?
Yeah, uh, I, yeah, and I, and I, and I, the reason is because I, I'm.
So that's free, but we're going.
Well, we're going to credit them the six hundred dollars from last year to this year because they didn't have any gathering. They didn't need to. Because the agreement is six hundred for storage and six hundred for building use.
Well, we don't have them as a client.
Yes, they still have lease.
Pardon?
They still have lease. Just like forty-two. So what we're doing is we're taking our six hundred dollars from this year's lease and putting it on next year's lease. They're not getting it for a year.
So we're giving them a year off?
We're giving them a year off because they paid for the use that they didn't use for years.
So you want to word it out?
Hmm?
So how do you want it worded? Or we are.
We will credit them the six hundred dollars used for the last, these times to this lease.
And that's what I would rather have that say that we're crediting used last year.
Use that word for it to some trouble.
Pardon?
Use that word for it to some trouble. Get one.
That's awesome.
Get one.
Okay.
Right.
No, that's not.
And they go strictly on um fundraisers and stuff and they haven't been able to have that either, so they really, I don't.
They have that.
No. Yeah.
Okay. Take support? I, I did. You did?
Go, go.
Alan, yes. Bessie, yes. Louis.
Yes.
And Riley, yes.
All right, um, we need approval to purchase the eight or five eight hundred megahertz radios. This will take, this is pretty much finish our inner megahertz radio requirements for the fire department right now.
So everything will be up to date?
Yeah, everything will be up to date. We pretty much have eight hundred megahertz throughout, throughout the department at this point.
Now, once those are purchased, those have to be programmed?
Yeah, there's going to also be a two hundred and fifty dollar activation fee for each of these lines. It has to be done. We've got ten thousand in the budget right now for communications, which covers this.
I'll make that motion. I'll support.
Motion. Support. Any other questions? Go, 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 please.
Bessie, yes. Louis.
Yes.
Riley, yes. Alan, yes. You want that taken out of what? Operational, communication?
Communications. You, you've got the, you can, you've got to go for that.
Yeah, I guess.
All right. Building on leased land attorney approval. Um, I, we, she turned that on Jim today on this, okay? Um, and I got back with him also on this. Uh, he's uh, he's still checking into how we.
Handle it.
Well, yeah, because as you, as you, I don't know how much, you guys know about the building on leased land and how it's worked?
No, I don't.
Okay. Building on leased lands, building on, buildings on leased lands are taxed as real property. That's how they're, that's how the state tax mission requires them to tax. Their tax is real property until, until the owners of the building um, quit paying their taxes. When they quit paying their taxes, then it goes into foreclosure and you turn it over to the local treasurer and your county treasurer and he tries to foreclose on it like they would on any other normal real property, they then revert it back to personal property. Well, I don't know if you're aware or not, but personal property goes to the local treasurer to, to foreclose on. The way you foreclose on personal property, personal property is like um a cash register or a piece of equipment. And the way the local treasurer forecloses on personal property, they literally go into the business and they take the property and say, And the way the local treasurer forecloses on personal property, they literally go into the business and they take the property and say, I'm taking this until you pay your personal property tax.
All right, auctioned off and then.
And they can auction it off and get their money back. Well, when you've got a physical building, it's kind of hard to walk into the building and take the building off the land and say, I'm going to take this until you pay your taxes. But that essentially is where we are. We have, um, a church camp on Chain Link, Chain Link Hope Resort that has a cabin that is going into foreclosure.
The guy died and his wife abandoned it and it's got Texas from two thousand fourteen on and I can't collect my, I, everything moves back.
So we literally have a cabin.
Yeah.
That is in foreclosure. The county sent it back because it's building on leased land. It's now reverted from a real property to a personal property. And they're saying it's up to you to, it's up to us to close it.
But they didn't wash their hands of it till three years ago.
Yes.
It was already behind four years by the time they gave it to them.
So now the question is, how do we get the taxes out of this building? Because you can't physically go up there and remove the builder from the land and sell the building.
So that's the question we're asking.
Because we've never done it. We want to be able to tell us what we can go with.
Can we go up and can we sell this building?
Right.
Can we have a, can we have a sale? Can we have a, you know?
And here's the other issue.
An auction and sell this building.
Nobody can find a copy of the lease.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah, to be able to sell the building, you've got to show that you've got ownership of the ability to sell it as a lease on the land that it sits on.
And there's nobody can find a copy of it.
Oh, wow.
So we're looking to see what the procedures have got to be to where.
Doesn't somebody have to have a copy of it?
When you register it, they do, if they don't, the owners of the camp don't. And the owner of the home won't. Don't. But it will never go away if we don't fix this. It'll always be there.
It'll always be there, keep it taxed.
It's just, it's just, it's a huge old cabin. I mean, it needs T L C, but it's got good bone.
But we can't even just sell it. No. We don't know. We gotta find out.
We don't know until we're trying to find out, but here's the issue. For, for us to go through this process, for us to go through this process, it's going to take attorney's fees.
And we don't involve it.
Well, and that's exactly what I'm asking the attorney. My question to him is, how much, how much is it going to cost us for you to tell me what it's gonna take for us to recoup our money out of this? And is it going to be that enough for us to recoup our money out of this? Because if this cabin is only going to get five thousand dollars, we've got three thousand to be taxed and your fees are going to be three thousand and I'm only gonna get five thousand. I'm not even.
You're not even gonna get back because that goes to the school, the county and all the villages.
Exactly. That's how I get done. If I'm only gonna get, if I'm only gonna get five thousand dollars out of a seven thousand dollar investment, this isn't making any money.
So, so if we do nothing, then we just keep paying taxes on it?
No, we don't do anything. We don't collect any.
Nobody.
Nobody. It's just going.
Just sets it.
Set it up, okay. It doesn't get taxed every year.
Yes.
Well, the taxes just set there. You just keep improving.
Right, but it keeps adding on. Who's gonna pay for those? We, that's what I'm saying.
Nobody's paying. They just sit there improving.
Right, okay.
They just sit there improving over and over, over and over again.
And when I come around the wheel, it's not forever.
It's on a, it's on a foundation.
And is it long or?
It's a, it's a, it's a brain structure, small cabin, probably, uh, probably five, five hundred, five hundred square feet. A little two bedroom cabin in the.
If the wind would blow it over and go away, that would be the best thing that could happen. Because that would just draw the wrong is gone.
Yeah, but it's on a, it's on a, it's on a, it's on a Chain Link Hope Resort Church. Pardon?
Sounds like it would be worth it.
Uh, yeah, I know. I, I'm not sure it would, would stand to move as that. I mean, it's, it's, it could, it may be, I don't know. I, I, I've never been in, I've never been inside, but I've seen, I've looked in it. I've looked through the windows. You know, I've been up on the deck. Never been underneath it. But it's, I.
It's the fire department still with it.
Nah, you know, I'll tell you, the, the problem with that is by the time you get the permits to burn a place, it costs you more than it does to just let it go down, to be honest with you. Because they, you gotta get legal permits and gotta get inspections on it, make sure there's no asbestos and it's, it's a, it's a mess anymore to do a, to do a burn like that for part of it. We, we tried that a few years ago. I was like, this is crazy.
Is the land's worth more than the house?
Pardon?
Is the land worth?
The land doesn't go with it.
No, what I'm saying, the, the, the Goshen, the west side of the river owns it.
Well, the problem with people who, we, we don't know who owns it. The guy that owns it was gone. I mean, that, that.
Died.
That.
He died.
Yeah, they, they're gone.
Is it Lakefront?
Oh, no, no.
Oh.
No, good Lord, no. Good Lord, no.
Yeah.
No, no.
It's just one of those dilemmas. We have no answer.
It's, it's in the middle of, middle of the woods. Okay, so I was hoping to be able to have an idea on how much it would cost, but, but he didn't get, he didn't price back again, so that's why I was hoping to be able to tell you tonight, so. I would get that back with you and hopefully be able to give that to you. Maybe next week I can tell you what we're looking at for money there to, 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 so. All right, um, next up, we need a motion, um, on a revolving fund. We need to put money into the revolving fund to pay this final invoice. Um. Right now, we've got, um, got invoices, you guys have, for twenty-four, nine thirteen. So you're on, on Long Lake. We've got at least two more, two more items coming in. We've got a fourth quarter payment of twenty-six, twenty-five coming in and a permit that's gonna probably be coming in November for fifteen hundred.
There permits fifteen hundred, yeah.
So that total cost for those three items that we've got right there is about twenty-nine thousand. We've got sixteen thousand cash on the end. That's gonna leave us short about thirteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
So we're gonna need at least thirteen thousand in the revolving fund to cover this.
Well, we don't need exactly most of the others.
Pardon?
No, I'm just thinking about.
Yeah, as long as there isn't anything else thirteen will cover.
Yeah.
We're really looking over to.
Yeah, so we have to set up the revolving fund along the Long Lake. We. You want to do thirteen?
Yeah. Set up the thirteen thousand.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we set up a revolving fund to do thirteen thousand dollars in general fund to Long Lake. We need to cover the deficit for PLM and the last quarter. Restorative and the permit. And so we surrender taxes when we start collecting and they get that. Correct?
Yep.
I'll second.
Is that gonna cover Jennifer's team and the governor, right?
Yes, that's.
Yeah, she's the.
Yeah, it covers that, also covers.
The fourth quarter.
Restorative, I said. This is a revolving fund. This has nothing to do with the special assistance. This is how much you're short from last year's approval.
We'll go, please.
Oh, I remember where I am. Lewis?
Yes.
Riley, yes. Alan, yes. And Bessie, yes.
All right, moving on. Committee reports. Historical, anything?
No.
Yes, don't have any else. Pat, you want to say anything? Fire, fire department, the school?
I'm a citizen, man.
You're a citizen.
No, he's not getting it.
Do you want to do your visitor card thing? Do you want to do?
No, I don't.
Yeah, you don't, all right. You have to.
Yes, I've always had a guy that has arms fighting, bro.
Already? Ah, this is tonight, their first game.
Pat, Pat is one of our, just so you know, Pat is, in addition to being our, Pat's kind of a multifaceted guy. Pat doesn't, that's why he needs to come in and do things, because I put him on the spot. Pat is our, uh, Pat is our zoning administrator and he is also our, um, building department coordinator. He coordinates all of our builder, building inspections, building guy. Um, Pat is also, um, captain, captain in our fire department. As well as the, what, the M F R. He's, and he's also one of our M F R, um, he's a first responder certified M F R guy. So he's out on most of our M F R runs.
So if you see him sleeping at his desk, it's because.
Yeah, he is.
He's our Mr. Fix It. He is our entertainment. He's the pain in the rear end in our offices.
He also does a lot of maintenance around here in the building. Um, he's kind of by everything and you're taking care of stuff. So he is, he's the guy, he's the man. Tate, Tate's my man that you see around town, the, the red truck, he does everything outside, yeah, or the, with everything inside. So of those two guys, uh, this place is a ball party, so. I wanna thank you publicly for, for.
Thank you, man.
Don't back you up. It's not the pain too. Nah, we like it.
Um, all right, uh, board comments. Diane?
No, I'm good. This weekend, Fall Fest, live six to five, by Haley Association, up at the fairgrounds. The fire department wasn't putting on a pancake breakfast Saturday morning, starting at eight. Interested in that, but it looks like we're having a good time, so we'll see.
Oh, don't forget our open house, October twenty-seventh, six to eight.
Yep.
Yep, we'll have a little meeting before then, but we've got an open house October twenty-seventh in here. Just come on up and just walk around. We've got different things going on here. Activities and see everything, so on and so forth.
And there's prizes, prizes, prizes.
Uh, board, just for you, stuff that just came in, um, you know, we had our A M R and we had the different stuff that we had to correct on. And we just got the results, the response back from the state. We, they accepted our, our plan and they accepted it with no modifications and no follow-up. So we're good to go. Everything's been accepted. We're, we're cool on that. So we've been approved by the straight treasury and with no additional work. So, um. That being said.
Wait, the building's being painted too. The top of our building, you'll notice, is going to.
It's going away.
Blue is going away. Maybe a dark brown. The park that's already done, it's gonna look wonderful. It's gonna look wonderful. And what we did is we matched our doors and windows.
And next week, uh, next weekend also, you won't be able to get in here because we're having the, uh, we're having all the, all parking lines, drivers are being seal coated.
Saturday and Sunday.
Next Saturday and Sunday, we're splitting that cost. We split that cost with the school because they use the, they use the facilities around here. So we've got a deal worked out with them where we split the cost of that with them. So, so you've got, we've got a lot of short-term with them, so. Anyways, that being said, we'll see you guys next Wednesday night. And that being said, most of you are adjourned. If you'd favor, say aye.
Aye.